The hour of six o'clock having arrived, I'll call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have twelve members voting in the room and twelve members in civic court.
Very good. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Alder Campbell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Campbell. Give me one second here. Lost it, my email. Had it all set up, so.
Don't have it memorized?
You memorize it. Yeah, it's a tough one.
Tell us a point. I need someone to talk to me. Can't just pop one. No. Can't set myself off.
You're with me.
You know what they say about elevators? No?
Sorry about this.
They always get you high.
It'll be worth the wait, okay? All right, there we go. All right, so I thought I'd change it up for a little pace and be a little festive today, okay? So I found this a while back and it just, it was easy, all right? Little Christmas poem. 'Twas the night before Christmas, he lived all alone in a one-bedroom house made of plaster and stone. I had come down the chimney with presents to give and to see just who this home did I looked about, a strange sight I did see, no tinsel, no presents, not even a tree. My stocking by mantel, just boots filled with sand on the wall-hung pictures of a far-distant lands. With medals and badges, awards of all kinds, a sober thought came through my mind. For this was, house was different, it was dark and dreary. I found the home of a soldier once I could see clearly. The soldier lay silent, I'm sorry, a soldier lay sleeping, silent and alone, curled up on the floor, this one-bedroom home. The face was so gentle, the room in such disorder, not how I pictured a United States soldier. Was this the hero of whom I just read curled up on a poncho, the floor for a bed? I realized families that I saw this night own their lives to these soldiers who were willing to fight. Soon around the world, the children would play and grown-ups would celebrate the bright Christmas Day. They all enjoyed freedom each month of the year because of the soldiers like this one lying here. I couldn't help wonder how many lay alone on a cold Christmas Eve in a land far from home. The very thought brought a tear to my eye, I dropped my knees and started to cry. The soldier awakened and I heard a rough voice, "Santa, don't cry, this is my life, my choice." I fight for freedom, I don't ask for more, my life is my God, my country, my core. The soldier rolled over and drifted to sleep, I couldn't control it, I continued to weep. I kept watch for hours, so silent and still, and we both shivered from the cold night's chill. I didn't want to leave on that cold, dark night, this guardian of honor so willing to fight. Then the soldier rolled over with a voice so soft and pure whispered, "Carry on, Santa, it's Christmas Day, all is secure." I one look at my watch and I knew he was right, "Merry Christmas, my friend, and all to a good night." So there was more that, uh, this was posted by a Navy, a Marine, and I don't have that part in here, but he asked for everyone to keep that in their mind and send it out and share it with everybody. And I think we all can take time to think about that, and I will be saying that at my dinner table, too, so my kids will probably tell me to be quiet, but thank you guys for listening.
All right, thank you, Alder. Entertain a motion on approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting of the common council, seconded by Alder Eck. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Any changes here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Report by the mayor, just a couple quick things here, just wanted to note that the two thousand and twenty-four Standing Committee, excuse me, Standing Committee and Council schedule is included. It's also on the website, so just wanted people to know that that's been set for two thousand and twenty-four. Feel free to take a look at that and let us know if you have any questions. We also have our CIP before the council, our Finance Committee in particular, along with Finance Staff, has done a lot of work going over this at a number of different meetings. They've moved it along now to our common council for approval, so obviously really appreciate the work done by Finance Staff and Committee and entirety of city staff in pulling that together. Lot of important investments being suggested in this, especially with respect to city infrastructure, so I have a lot of confidence in the document that's been supported by committee and proposed by staff, so asking for your support on that this evening. Also, just wanted to note that Alder Johnson and I had the privilege of helping out with Toys for Tots another year over at the old ShopCo. It's going to be going, I think, for another couple days, so really just wanted to thank Salvation Army and all the volunteers for making that event possible. You know, unfortunately, there's a lot of need in this community and it's growing, but Salvation Army and so many other organizations step up year after year to make sure that every family has a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, so just really appreciate everything that they're doing to make that possible. And on that note, just want to, obviously, this is our last meeting before the end of the year, so wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year. So with that, we will move along to announcements from our council. Alder Stoyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know it's a busy time of year, we're all buying gifts, food, helping neighbors, doing different things, and I, the other day I was eating dinner and the news came on about the tragic car accident in Waukegan County that just ripped me apart, and the four young girls that died and the Garza family. So I just, you know, no matter what happens, you know, we, good times, we have friends, family, we have all sorts of things to be thankful for, and then things like that happen, and we just need to be aware and, you know, just keep trying. And anyway, my heart goes out to them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite the council, mayor, staff, and the community to the Fourteenth Annual Homeless Persons Interfaith Memorial Service. It will be held this Thursday, so a couple days from today, December twenty-first, at seven PM at Saint John's the Evangelist Church downtown. Each year since nineteen ninety, on or near the first day of winter and the longest night of the year, the National Coalition for the Homeless has sponsored National Homeless Persons Memorial Day to bring attention to the tragedy of homelessness and to remember those who have passed away while homeless. So preceding the seven o'clock service at Saint John's the Evangelist Parish is the Open Heart Mindfulness Community Walk at six-thirty. The memorial is sponsored by Saint John's Ministries and Saint John the Evangelist Parish, so please attend if you're able to. If you want more details, feel free to talk to me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other announcements? Seeing none, we'll move along to recognitions and awards. So really thrilled to be able to recognize Lieutenant Chris Thorson, who received the Forty Under Forty Award. This year, we have obviously a number of high-performing officers within our organization, employees in general, but Lieutenant Thorson has demonstrated time and time again that he really exceeds all expectations, not just here within the department. This is an international recognition. We've been fortunate enough, I'm told, to have one other member of our police department who's been recognized in the past. Commander Warwick received this recognition, but now Lieutenant Thorson is our second, and as I said, it's really an incredible recognition for an officer, a member of our police department to receive, and so I want to turn things over to our Chief Davis, who has a little bit more to say for Lieutenant Thorson. Chief?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and thanks, everybody, for giving us just a minute here. As the mayor said, this is the International Association of Chiefs of Police Forty Under Forty Award, which is given to people who are recognized in the policing community as up-and-coming leaders under the age of forty. And this is a pretty special award to get, and we're very lucky to have had two members of our organization to receive this. You know, Lieutenant Thorson started with us ten years ago in two thousand and thirteen, and really, you look at your history, you've packed a lot already into those first ten years. I think one of the things that's really special about this is the way this was initiated with IACP was actually one of Lieutenant Thorson's peers who nominated him for this, and then IACP, the Awards Committee, recognized that his, certainly, that he's worthy of this recognition, so we're very proud of this. I know how much you really enjoy being the center of attention and stuff here, but I, in all seriousness, I want to thank you for your ten years of service so far and for all of the work that you've done in terms of your own professional development, the great contribution that you've made already in the assignments that you've had in patrol, especially as a leader, as a sergeant on our night shift, which is obviously not an easy job, and now another one of the hardest jobs in the police department as a lieutenant in our Professional Standards Division, helping us maintain the high standards of the organization. So with that, congratulations.
Thank you. We got to stand here for pictures, so. Any words?
Thank you, I'm very humbled to get this. I appreciate all the recognition, and there's a lot of people that I can thank for this that are workers and actors and a lot of, I'll be here in all my ways, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Now, on to appointments, so we have a handful of reappointments here, entertain a motion on that. Motion to approve the reappointments before you, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and those reappointments are confirmed. On to ordinances, second reading for adoption. Oops. Oh, sorry, nope. Yep, we've got to make the appointment on the poll workers as well. Apologize for that oversight. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and those appointments are made, and...
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up all of our ordinances with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll use the board.
Give me one moment.
And those ordinances are adopted unanimously. On to the report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. On to the report of the Improvement in Services Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately?
No.
Item one, any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, item one, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. This was pulled by Alder Eck.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, let me...
We need four, okay, we have to go back. Go ahead.
I apologize, I did take, I said I'm one, it's four, gosh, I should have...
Oh, got it, okay. Well, we have a motion and a second to approve item one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, it has been approved.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the agenda made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, we're back to the report.
Aye. Of all but four.
Motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item four, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the agenda has been, the report, rather, has been approved with the exception of item four.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. That was pulled originally by Alder Eck.
Motion to open the floor.
Alder Eck makes a motion to open the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Stoyer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open. So customarily, you know, obviously allow for three minutes for testimony, but this is more of a presentation, so, yeah, so if you could just please approach the podium, state your name and address, and then we will get into the presentation on the transportation utility.
Will you open the floor for our presentation?
Well, we did.
That was what was requested.
Yeah, he's not a member of staff, so.
As long as we get there. Just here.
And it's not listed as a...
What's that, the clicker?
See if we got one available for you. I can use the, just the arrow buttons, or you can click just back and forth slides.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're ready.
Name and address, Jeff Mazanik, I'm a consultant with Ari Smith, work out of Appleton up there, and thank you for inviting me to talk with you tonight. We met with Improvement in Services Committee last week, and we had a very open discussion formatted type meeting. What's your pleasure tonight? Questions along the way?
Yeah, however you want to handle it, it's really fine.
I prefer that because it keeps you engaged, quite honestly. Okay. Thank you very much. So the discussion's going to be about transportation utilities, which is a funding mechanism in that, of course, you've expressed interest in it as many other cities on it. A lot of what's in here, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit discombobulated with the screen here, it's hiding things. If I can hide the...
Yeah, let me get that out the Zoom session. Does that work all the time?
There you go. I'm well aware that when somebody's talking about a technology and struggles with technology, it's a little bit of a credibility buster, but we'll be fine from here, so. First we're going to do is start off with just a real quick, just a real quick summary. Now, I think many of you, of course, this is what you do, you're all very familiar with this information on here, I think what does change from city to city is we, you know, you have different kinds of soil conditions, but we all have streets that wear out, and I don't believe there's a city in this state, perhaps a nation, that's been able to fund full street replacement as quickly as they were out. So that's the problem, we're all dealing with that, no surprises there. In Wisconsin, funding for streets in every city comes from general transportation aid rights, state shared revenue, local property taxes, general revenues borrowing on that, and sometimes in some cities from special assessments, assessments, rather, on street reconstruction, on increased borrowing, long-term debt, and then in some cities with vehicle registration fees, more commonly referred to as wheel tax. And over the last several years here, some development of transportation utilities, which first were started in the early nineteen nineties in the state of Oregon, where there are today about thirty cities, villages, that use this mechanism for funding the street programs. So what is a transportation utility? Of course, you're all very familiar with utilities. The difference with transportation is that the focus is on supporting, providing revenue to support those costs that go into maintaining a system for moving, safely moving goods and services and people throughout a community. Now, you run other utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater, some cities have their own power utilities, so it's very consistent with that. And what we've done over the years with these utilities is we've recognized that they operate very much like stormwater utilities, and we've structured the system and the user charges to, as best we can, mimic water utilities. How are they funded? Generally based on an estimated number of trips per property in the community, so that we can come up with a proportionate measure of benefit and impact from each property, which is why I said it relates very closely to stormwater. Your stormwater utility looks at the proportion of impervious area per property compared to the total amount of impervious area in a city, so that each unit of impervious area is a billable unit. In your water utility, billable units are about a hundred cubic feet, right? In transportation, we're looking at trips on an average weekday generated by each property, and then using the proportionate amount of that compared to the total. One of the things that's come up over the years has been some legal issues and challenges, and we'll get into that real quickly. The question is, do Wisconsin communities have the legal authority? And the answer is that, well, the basis for formation in Wisconsin is, has been the home rule authority that is provided to you as a city through the state constitution on it. There is not any specific statute that says, yes, you, City of Green Bay, can create a transportation utility. Similarly, thirty years ago, when the cities in Wisconsin started forming stormwater utilities, same situation existed. The first ten or eleven stormwater utilities were formed under home rule authority on it. That's the same basis we're looking at here. Now, also, there is not any statute currently on the books that says you cannot do it, there's nothing prohibiting doing it. So that's been the means and the basis for formation, so I wasn't kidding. If there are questions along the way, please bring them up, okay? Not a lot of news here yet. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, Wisconsin Manufacturers in Commerce sued the village of Pewaki, who started a stormwater utility, started charging for it in the middle of the year in two thousand and twenty-two, and continues to this day to send quarterly bills on a transportation utility on it. I had the good fortune of working with the village, they are a long-term client of ours. WMC claimed that the utility, the transportation utility fee is a tax that violates Wisconsin law because of the lack of statutory authorization that we just discussed and uniformity. They simply claimed that it lacked the authority, that the village lacked the authority to form it, and it's preempted by state law. So this went to the Waukesha County Circuit Court, who boiled the issue down to three questions. Does the village have the authority? Is it preempted by state law? And then the distinction of the charge, whether that charge is technically a user charge, rather, or a tax. The court issued a ruling on March ninth of two thousand and twenty-three, and their decision on whether or not the village has the authority, their decision was that it indeed is empowered to create a transportation utility for those reasons shown, again, referencing the constitutional granted home rule authority that you enjoy as a city. You have statutory authorization to manage and control your village property, I'm sorry, that should be city property, uses multiple communities, right? And then also, there is statute on the books that expressly grants you the ability to create and operate public utilities. So that was the response to that first challenge, the first question. The second one, whether or not there isn't any preemption in state law, they said simply no, there is not any statute on the books that preempts it. You have the ability to create ordinances that don't conflict with state law, and this didn't do that, and also that this, there was some concern that this essentially becomes a toll on the use of a street and road, and they declared that's not the case on it. And so they, that court concluded that the specific statutes do confer the authority of the village. And the tough one is looking at the rate structure of the user charge system, how those costs were developed, and judging whether or not that is indeed a user charge or a fee, rather than a tax. And their decision, the court's decision on this, was based on the function of the utility, how it collects funds, what it uses the money for are keys to declaring it to be a user charge and not a tax. They, again, note the statutes that provide the ability to make the charges on it, and they also noted the bullet to the right there, that the costs are based on proportionate use benefit and impact services provided. So their conclusion boiled down to three points, that it's not a fee, I mean, I'm sorry, it is a fee, it's not a tax, because it funds a service provided by the municipality, the funds are used only for road maintenance, and the charges are reasonably related to road use and cost of road maintenance. Going a little, well, and then the next step that happened, this was a March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three decision, as you can read there, the decision was ordered, it was, I'm sorry, the case was dismissed with prejudice and with statutory costs. A few weeks later, WMC filed an appeal, and that was in April of this year, April twenty-one. We are still waiting for the appellate court to issue a ruling on it. So that's the current status from a legal perspective. Separate decision or separate information provided by the Wisconsin League of Municipalities in two thousand and twenty was that their assessment is that fees need to be collected in a separate fund to be used only for transportation, that's consistent, of course, suggesting you collect the fees in the same manner as are the utility charges, that the formula be accurate, that tax-exempt properties be treated the same as taxable properties, and that's a key, in the same way that your stormwater utility charges a stormwater user charge on all properties in the city, this works the same way. There's not an exemption based on taxable status. And then also that there be an ability to appeal and that there be ability to adjust fees based on specific conditions per property. And then from a broader perspective, in terms of those things that are required for any legitimate user charge with utility, that the charges be cost-based, equitable, and set to meet your revenue requirements, that they be consistent, that they be allocated based on use, and again, that they be stable over time, so, pretty much, yes, sir.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, sir. You had mentioned that, under this proposal, that nonprofits would be paying for roads and whatnot. Could you state the status of tribal governments? Because if a tribal government owns land that's put in trust, or owns land that's held in fee, not trust, would tribal governments pay in towards this transportation utility?
So, not wanting to dodge your question, but acknowledging I'm not an attorney, my best response is that it would be treated the same way as your stormwater utility charges, because it's on the same basis. I don't have expertise in that area, but that would be my first, that would be the first thing I'd look at.
Yeah, and the reason why, you know, it's very relevant to the City of Green Bay, and you may know this, is that fourteen percent of the City of Green Bay is within a reservation boundary, so you're looking at a rather significant, if all of those properties went paying to this transportation utility, then the rest of the tax base or properties in this case would have to, so that would, I just would, for, to be comfortable with this, I need to get that clarity, so.
And I think what you point out, from my perspective, if we were to develop this model, is we would identify those properties separately so we could run your model with and without those properties impacted, and understand the magnitude of the impact, the envelope of it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, whoops, sorry.
Good question, Alder Burnett, and obviously we'll run that down. Alder Eck?
Well, it's basically, just kind of piggybacking off of Alder Burnett's question is, do we know whether they pay the wheel tax? Because wouldn't it be, I would think it'd be similar to that, but maybe, do you know...
Like Mr. Mazanik said, it's actually closer to, if they pay into stormwater utility or sanitary utility, then they would be paying here as well, so that's the closest analogy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, want to move on a little bit to talking about how this actually... So, want to move on a little bit to talking about how this actually has developed, how it's modeled, and where that comes from, how do you implement it? And process is pretty similar to what you're used to. In other areas, you need to first really identify what your funding objectives are. And going from city to city, different answer for every city depending on your specific situation. A lot of the times when the cities we're working with will look at including revenue from a user charge for transportation alongside of maybe less use of general revenue funds, perhaps less borrowing. Many who have wheel taxes, one of the first priorities is to eliminate the wheel tax, replace those funds with this. Some cities, City of Oshkosh, City of Wisconsin Rapids, for example, their primary goal is to eliminate special assessments as a thing. So your particular answer, you know, may be very unique to you and should be. Second is to then create the model. We'll talk a bit more about that in a minute. Once you have a revenue goal and you have a model, and you can calculate user charges and understand what those costs are like that, it's very important at that point, you know enough then that you can effectively engage the public and be responsive to them and to their questions and needs. And that's, that's an important process. It's also very helpful going forward. Then you make a go-no-go decision on whether or not to actually authorize the utility and start it, and then implement it and administer it. And then, of course, on a annual basis, as you set your budget, periodically you would, you would make adjustments just as you do with any of the other utilities that you administer. With that administering, we'll talk a bit about later. But again, it is an ongoing utility, and it needs to be administered, again, very much like a stormwater utility. So I, I think already hit the first part of this slide. Those are the reasons that communities are doing this, replace assessments, reduce borrowing, and fill funding gaps for various reasons. Another is that it does provide a guaranteed revenue stream for just transportation purposes like that. So I talked a little bit briefly about the concept of assigning trips. So trips are assigned to a property based on the function of that property, what happens to it, and the scale of that operation, how large is it? So we'll get into some examples on that in a minute as well. But by adding up all the trips in the community, just like you add up all the impervious area for stormwater, you end up with a total number of trips. And that becomes the denominator, right? When you divide that into your budget, you end up with a rate per trip. And then you can use that, of course, to, to calculate charges for each property on it. So again, it's unique per property based on the function of that property and how those trips are generated from that function and the magnitude of it. This is asking for a restart. Thank you. Whoop, now we got a, okay. So how does it relate to individual properties? It's based on the property, the primary use of the property. And the way we look at this is that the relationship between any property in the city and your transportation infrastructure has two parts. One is that every property in the community enjoys what I'm calling the benefit of access. Your transportation system gives that property, the people on that property, the owners of it, the ability to come and go. Regardless of whether they're driving a big truck or a little car, they enjoy that benefit of access on it. The second part of it is every time they exercise that right, every time they use your streets, they add to the degradation of the roadway. In that case, a bigger truck degrades more than a small car and all that, but it's the number of trips that, that lead to how quickly your roads wear out and how long they last. So we're looking at those two components. We talked a bit earlier about the fact that this applies to all properties regardless of their use, their ownership, or their tax status. So on an individual property, you identify the dominant land use. We use data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Statistics, which is the data that, that your traffic engineers have used for, for all of time to design intersections and signalization, signals. It's, it's the, the traffic impact analysis I'm sure you've dealt with on projects in the past. The data that the trip generation statistics provide covers about two hundred, two hundred and twenty properties. And the data we use are the statistics for average weekday trip generation. So we're using a particular use that matches what's going on in the property to give us a rate. We use the size, and then we end up with the number of trips for that property. I'm going to show you some examples here in just a minute. Once you have the number of trips, we can multiply that times that rate, the charge per trip, to come up with the cost for the property on it. And then we have to look at reality and make adjustments. For example, if you're looking at assigning trips to a golf course, we have to recognize that they don't have a whole lot of traffic between the middle of October and the middle of April. So you make those kinds of adjustments. Same with schools. Oh, and the box, should note too, just for definition purposes, when you left your home tonight or, or work, wherever you came from, that, that was a trip that you generated. When you came to City Hall here tonight, that's the second trip. When you leave here, that'll be a third trip. When you enter your property, you get home, that's the fourth trip. So two trips, make a visit, so to speak, or a visit is two trips, one in, one out. Okay? This is an example of the data that the trip generation statistics or the IT manual provides on it. And I think I can point, that's not working. So if you look at, oops, if you look at the upper box there, what this is showing you is this, this data chart is showing you that these trips are for an average weekday, and these are trips for a single-family home. The description you see, single-family detached housing. For each of those two hundred-plus sets or, uh, land uses, they provide that type of narrative description to help understand where to best apply that particular data on it. And this is telling us that the average, the number of average weekday trips generated by a single-family home through all this data is nine point four three. Okay? This example is looking at a manufacturing facility, and the, the basis for this, the scale basis here is thousands of square feet. It's the size of the manufacturing facility and thousands of square feet. You can see that the average rate for trips per average weekday per thousand square feet is four point seven nine or thereabouts, a little under five. For an industrial facility, it's a little bit different from that, but that, those are the different kinds of distinctions that are provided by the various land uses in the IT data. This example is looking at a high school for schools. The, the best, the best scale basis is the number of students enrolled. And for this particular example here, we're looking at high school type rate. And you can see that the number of trips there for, per student on an average weekday. Now, again, talking about the golf course being adjusted, the rates being adjusted for, for wintertime, similarly, you adjust K-12 rates for much less use in the summertime. So how are the user charges determined? Well, we determine the trips. Again, we have a number of billing accounts. We calculate a base charge that is the amount of those costs in your budget that are for things like billing and staff support. Divide those equally among all of the accounts in the city. We have the number of assigned trips per property. And then we can, of course, add the cost per trip times the number of trips to come up with the total cost for that property. The only properties that are not charged are those that don't generate any trips. So things like a public parking lot, for example. Parking lot doesn't generate trips, it just accommodates cars for those adjacent properties that do generate the trips. And then undeveloped parcels, things like that. Yes, sir?
Alder Galvin. So, and I'm, like, like a large, like a mall. A lot of that property is parking lot. So there's, that, that kind of negates it, doesn't it, in a way?
No, so, well, so the, the property itself then is the mall, and all of those stores and that property itself, that's what generates the trips.
Okay.
The parking lots that surround it don't by themselves generate any trips. They just, they just accommodate the need to park the cars for the, for the mall properties that do generate the trips.
So is that square footage kept out of the calculation?
No, so the square footage is used as a building square footage.
Okay.
Gross leasable space.
Sure.
I think.
All right.
Sure.
Thank you.
Recently, did, did those calculations for Mayfair Mall in Wauwatosa on it. There are statistics for large malls like that that are available. And that's what we would apply, you know, where, where it fits here to. So how the model functions, what I'm trying to show on the left is where the information comes from that goes into this model. And you, you know, you have the property information that's in your parcel database. That's, that's normal, of course. The trip generation rates we've, rates we've been talking about come from the IT database. The GIS, Street View Web, all those kinds of things provide important data to help build the model. And then your utility account information is used to link each part, property to the utility account for the process of actually billing those properties on it. The result of the model we developed is then a spreadsheet or a CSV file that is exported for the utility to use in their billing software to populate the billing line on those utility bills. So this graph is, this graph is a paired bar chart. And the intention of this graph is to compare how payment for transportation costs raised through general revenue sources, meaning property taxes, compares to raising that same money based on trips. Ooh, I didn't do that. Here we go. So the orange bars there are showing you, if you can read, I'm sorry, down the left, you'll see a number of those category names like services, retail, office, medical, institutional, recreational. You'll see residential, manufacturing, or industrial. And the orange bar there is the percentage of property. And it can tell you this is the city of Wauwatosa data, the very urban city, about two-thirds the size of Green Bay. So about sixty-five percent or so of all the assessed value in the city of Wauwatosa is residential. That's very typical of the, of the thirteen or so cities that I've developed this for. That's pretty normal in the middle of that range. And for each of those different sectors, each of those different land use categories, that's what that orange bar is. The blue bar is what those same properties would pay allocation of cost based on trips generated. The typical, the typical chart like this does generally show that the residential properties end up with considerable savings, often about half of the cost of what their proportion would be on a property tax basis. So that's good news there. But every bit of that orange bar then, that's, that's not covered by the blue bar, has to be made up for the other property uses. So you'll see up near the top, and I can just point it out a little bit better, but you'll see, for example, that the retail and services blue bars are considerably greater than the orange bars, meaning that the proportion of that total budget that is paid based on user, on user charges for trips generated by retail and service properties is considerably greater than what their share is based on just the assessed property value. Again, going back to the concept being, you generate more trips, you get more use and benefit out of the street infrastructure, you pay a greater share of it. In the same way that if you have more impervious area, you generate more runoff, you pay more of the stormwater bill. Yes, sir?
Alder Galvin. Maybe I'm getting ahead of your presentation, but right now, a wheel tax only taxes residential vehicles. This would be taxing everybody.
Alder Galvin, that is not accurate. If you, if you have a vehicle registered in the city of Green Bay, you pay the wheel.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what I meant.
But I mean, a business can register a vehicle in the city of Green Bay.
But they don't pay.
They do.
Oh, they do?
They do.
The businesses that register within the city do, but if they register outside of the city, they don't. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
Director Grenier.
Okay.
The vehicle registration fees are based on the gross vehicle weight rating of the vehicle. There are only certain plate types that are applicable. Those come to us directly from the Department of Motor Vehicles. And it's relegated to those vehicles which are less than eight thousand pounds in gross vehicle weight.
Okay, thank you. So th- this community that's using this process right now, have they, with the court and everything else, have they had a chance to actually collect any money yet through the utilities?
Absolutely. This, the village of Pewaki has been collecting for two years on a quarterly basis. The city of Wisconsin Rapids has been collecting for a year and a half on a monthly basis. Wisconsin Rapids owns their own power utility. So they have a power utility, they're going to build monthly.
All right.
Okay.
Have those communities, because of what they're doing, taking this money, using it towards the roads, like here, we, we take out loans to do our roads, we collect the wheel tax. Have they been able to reduce the amount that they're bonding? Are they even bonding anymore? I mean, are their taxes going down overall because of this?
So it's, that's a very astute but complicated question from this perspective, that each community's situation is different. In the case of Wisconsin Rapids, they're funding their utility goal at the level to replace special assessments.
That's it.
So in their case, two benefits happen. One is no more special assessments. And also, they're saving a, a full-time equivalent staff person's time by not dealing with special assessments. But it has no impact on their property taxes on it. The city of Janesville, which ultimately put this off because there was a change in council, didn't do it. But they passed a resolution in twenty, I believe, 2016, requiring that they replace or repave twelve miles of street annually. Now, again, Janesville's about two-thirds your size, you can extrapolate that.
Sure.
Because of that, they were consuming their bonding capacity, their borrowing limit was getting closer and closer by doing it that way. That's why they looked at, at this. So their purpose, their goal was different than, for example, Wisconsin Rapids. Village of Pewaki is using this partially to offset ongoing costs, increase their program, and to help pay for a new public works facility. Now, the village of Pewaki is considerably smaller community than, than, than you are. So again, their goals are all different. Now, I, I did the original model for the village in North Fond du Lac literally twenty years ago. And at the time, they decided to instead form a stormwater utility because they hadn't done that yet. And then, of course, their board changed and all that. They made a commitment in 2003 that they would reduce a dollar of property tax for every dollar of user charge they generated on it. That was where they were at. And indeed, some cities have said they would do that because they see the benefit in the user charge is that it's a dedicated revenue stream and consistently controlled, even if they'd end up offsetting it. Most communities, of course, want the additional revenue. But, but your, so, so what, what we would provide, working with your finance staff and your team, would be a tool to incorporate this or integrate this into a more complex set of scenarios, looking at all those different options. And running them out over ten years or even twenty to better understand that long-term impact as you work on your street program through those years.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on that graph before we move on? All right, moving on, this, this chart is, has been shown publicly in a similar meeting with the city of Wauwatosa Council. So, I'm sorry, Wauwatosa. So I'm using it publicly because it's been publicly presented. Okay, fair game. You'll notice at the top, maybe in small print, that this is based on their target budget of four, I'm sorry, three million dollars on it. And what I did for their discussion with this was I went into their model and I pulled out the average size property in each of those land use categories, and then displayed what the cost would be. So for example, I've got a, a size of a thousand square feet for General Light Industrial. That was the average size General Light Industrial property in Wauwatosa. I suspect Green Bay's would be a bit larger than that, but it's, I'm looking for relative comparison. And you can run across the numbers to the right and see what their annual user charge cost would be. The amount of those numbers isn't real relevant to you because, of course, the budget amount would be different. If the budget was six million, it would be twice as big. And on that, what I really want to demonstrate with this is to give you some sense of proportionality, where you're looking at in the typical community, if, if a res, if a General Light Industrial property is seven fifty and a manufacturing facility is two and a half times that, let's say, at two thousand, I want to give you some sense of where those numbers fall with respect to each different kind of category. Everybody's obviously concerned about churches. You'll notice there that a church property in Wauwatosa for their size, and their average is about five or six hundred dollars at that funding level. But again, I'm looking more at how that compares to the other kinds of properties in that list. Okay? And I'm sorry that I, I, I didn't include a school. But I can tell you, for that three-million-dollar budget, the entire bill, bill for the Wauwatosa School District was about fifty thousand dollars a year. Not a small amount, but again, looking at it in magnitude comparison to the three-million-dollar total budget. Okay? Move on? Yes, sir?
Question, you said three million dollars, was there?
Alder, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, you were saying that, that was the three-million-dollar budget for Wauwatosa?
So that was, no, that was, so Wauwatosa's goals were a little different. They want to raise more money. They wanted to use this to offset part of their special assessments.
So it's just a portion?
Yeah, so that, yes, absolutely, yeah. I, I haven't run into anybody yet who intends to use this to fund the entire transportation program. Many of them are looking to, to maybe pull back a bit on the borrowing, right? Because they're concerned about consuming their debt limit. And anybody with a wheel tax or with special assessments, that seems to be a priority in those communities to first get rid of that. And then. to first get rid of that and then work down the list of the other goals. I'll mention too, Wisconsin Rapids was interesting. They asked us to look at three funding levels for them, not just one. They wanted to look at a, a budget of five hundred and fifty thousand a year, which is what it would take to replace their special assessments. They wanted us to look at a two-point-two million dollar annual budget, which is the size of their current annual street program. And they asked us to look at five-point-five million dollars a year, which would make that street program sustainable, meaning, meaning bringing that program up to replace streets more closely to the rate at which they need to be replaced. Okay? Ultimately, what they did so far is they funded it at that lower level to get the street, the special assessments gone.
So, the follow-up question, um, so you're saying it's a portion of that, so to speak. So, have you, with the other communities that you worked with, did you, did they do some of that as far as, well, let's try this scenario A, or scenario B? You know, they just went through a couple of different scenarios and just plugged in different numbers, different things?
Yes.
And then the city would kind of decide what was best for them?
Yes. And, and actually, more often, three, four, five, six scenarios like that, too.
All right, thank you.
Just taking a, a quick look at, at Green Bay, and I've used state parcel data here. And it didn't occur to me, I didn't have a way to pull out lands that might be tribal lands on it. But just to give you an idea of where your property assessments fall by category, where about sixty-five percent of the assessed value in the city of Green Bay is from residential properties and commercials twenty, twenty-nine or thirty. The other part, though, that I thought was interesting was the same statistics, but looking at the number of parcels. So, it's, it's interesting, you have nearly six percent of your properties are currently tax exempt for, for whatever reason on it. So, not a lot of news in here, but I, I'd like to look at it just to get a bit of a sense of what's going on in the community and how they're composed with it. Mentioned briefly, administration. The administrative process, I, I want to make it clear that when you start a new utility, you have to administer that utility the same way you do stormwater. So, there is some ongoing work involved with that because you're continually changing properties, adding properties, abandoning them, just like any other operation of the city with it. I have confirmed with the folks that are doing this for a living now, right, in those cities, that their effort is similar to what they see with stormwater. So, that's, that's, that's where they're at. So, in Wisconsin, this is what I'm aware of, the little bouncy thing there. There may be others going on that I'm simply not aware of, but this is a pretty decent list. The active utilities in Wisconsin that I'm aware of right now are, are, as you can see in the upper left. Ongoing efforts, the, the city of Fort Atkinson, the Village of Greenville, we're currently developing models for them. The, a number of cities, you can see the cities and villages bottom left corner there. When the, two things happened. When the Village of Pewalki decision was appealed by WMC, some said, well, let's not spend any time or money on this if it's murky again. Second, I, I didn't mention earlier, there was a, a utility set up in the town of Buchanan. Town of Buchanan is a southeast corner of the city of Appleton area there. That was terminated by Supreme Court decision. They ruled it to be not legal, not legally based. That's quite different than what we're talking about. The town doesn't have home rule authority. They formed it other different rules and that. It's, it's not relevant to what we're talking about for a city or a village like that. But that's the status of that one. Some cities, some villages have, have done the analysis, ran all the scenarios we talked about and said, I don't think this is right for us right now. And then used it as a basis to make other decisions, which is really our goal, is to get you what you need to make a well-informed decision that's best for Green Bay. Yes, sir?
Alder, sure.
Jeff, I was wondering with the monies that are collected, you know, you said some communities are collecting monies and they're building that up, so to speak. But if the appellate court overturns or overrules, is there anything that, what, what would happen to that money? Would they give it back to the citizens or how would that work?
Again, I'm an engineer. I don't know that there's precedent for that. I think that would be very difficult. But we'd have to wait and see. And, and I suspect, again, not being an attorney, I suspect that it would tie back to the very specific technical issues that the decision would be based on, right? So. We were pretty happy with how comprehensive and strongly worded the judge's decision was in Waukesha County. So, we're real curious to see what could come out of an appeal that would be different. Hopefully, we'll hear soon.
Give a brief reason why that suit was brought up? I know there was some things here, but was there, is there a quick way to just describe why they brought it up?
It's simply the, the Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce folks felt that it was bad for industry.
All right, that's good. Thank you.
And then, I'd been asked kind of where, where would Green Bay fit? These are the communities that, that we've worked with on it. Obviously, you would be the largest in the, in the state so far, being the, what, number three, I think, sized city in the state on it. But those are the cities that have, have been looking at this for various degrees and you can see what their current status is. As you can see, some of the larger ones are, are holding. Wauwatosa was actually ready to go to a vote the day after the Buchanan ruling came out. And they decided, understanding the Buchanan ruling's not directly relevant, but it's an emotional thing, and they decided to hold off until the Pewalki case clears the air. And that's where, of course, they are. And I think that is what we had tonight.
All right. Thanks so much for your presentation, very informative. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for you. And since you're not the attorney, maybe perhaps one for Director Allenbecker or Director Grenier, whoever has the answer. As a utility, are, are we exempt from expenditure restraint? Okay. So, I think that's an important point as, as we think about, you know, because at the end of the day, at its core, as I've listened to all of this, I mean, to me, it's just a financing alternative, right? And, and I think it gives us a lot to chew on as a council. I'm definitely supportive of exploring more because I do think that there's a lot to contemplate here. And I think the real political discourse will come, you know, once we have more information to look at. But the, are, is the transportation utility, is it sidewalk replacement? Is that an allowable expenditure?
It can be.
Yeah. And that's all I wanted, like, I don't, I'm not saying we should do that or not do it. I just want to know if it's allowable at this point.
As Jeff indicated, there, there really isn't language that says you can do this. And similarly, there's no language under state statute that says you cannot.
Sure.
Generally accepted that it must be for transportation use and segregated for transportation uses only. Arguably, sidewalks are pedestrian transportation uses. So, the argument could definitely be made to include. Now, some, some folks have elected to do that and some have not.
Okay. And I just think, again, we have a lot of time to really contemplate pros and cons of all these things, you know? And, and so, just understanding what could be allowed so that we can properly contemplate it. Maybe it's even considered in the study. The other piece of that would be, you know, and Alder, you kind of alluded to this, right? If you, if you, you know, kind of take it here, can you give it there, right? And so, engineering costs, is, is that, could, could that potentially be pulled off the levy and put into the transportation utility?
Those engineering costs, which are directly related to the transportation utility, yes, those would be applicable costs.
Okay. And what about, uh, uh, management of parking facilities?
Probably not, because the parking facility, again, is not necessarily, it's ancillary too, but it would be considered a business which would potentially generate trips.
Yeah. And it's just something I'd like to look at a little bit more because I, I see some of the struggles the parking utility has with obviously being solvent. And, and I just, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that a combination of these things can help make that a little bit more stable.
Well, and that, that becomes an interesting point. We have all colloquially referred to our parking division as a parking utility. Parking ceased being a utility decades ago because it couldn't function as a utility. So, parking in Green Bay is actually a special revenue fund, but it is not a utility, does not enjoy utility status.
Noted. But I'll talk to you about that separately a little bit, Director Grenier. So, a comment, I, I mean, I'd love to see, obviously, in a model, what it would look like if we eliminate all special assessments. Currently, we're fifty percent on commercial properties. And I think the challenges sometimes we have is that especially smaller commercial properties still have a tendency to come before council and to, to appeal or plead to not have their property done, even though it's the road that needs to be done. And then it's, and then it becomes up to the whim of political decisions, which I think is in our best interest to avoid. What happens if somebody doesn't pay their utility fee?
That is a question we will have to confer with the attorneys on.
Okay. And then, you know, one thing, of course, today, I, I really do like, and, and we've talked about this here before, and that's the stabilization topic. So, the fact that you can stabilize and consistently commit to a dedicated revenue source to fund road repairs every year, and I think after a period of, of time, you ought to be able to eliminate finance charges associated with bonding because you have that, you know, how that, that math works, you could probably save some money there. You know, and, and I've said this at a meeting before, like, we cannot continue to fund roads exclusively with debt. I think the greatest challenge that the state has before it, now that it's sort of, sort of resolved shared revenue, is, is, is growing debt in, in municipalities and villages exceeding their debt capacity. And so, I think this gives us a tool to help address that. And the other topic that I think, just a point that needs to be made, because I hear it all the time, I'm sure you guys do too, that, oh, we passed the wheel tax, how come the roads aren't fixed? And, and the wheel tax is woefully insufficient to cover the cost of road construction, especially when half of it is really just eliminating special assessments. So, I think this allows us to have a real honest conversation about the true cost of road construction. Can we deliver a product that our residents expect and not do it in a, a debt way that costs us more money and creates other problems for us and also contributes to levy limit discussions when it comes time to repay that debt? So, I, I think that there's, that's why I say there's a lot of financing discussion involved with this. One hundred percent support this. I love the funding source. To me, that's exactly what, what ARPA interest makes a lot of sense, you know, to cover opportunities like this that could eventually actually, I think, ultimately, give our residents a product that they're demanding in a way that doesn't create additional burden on them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Other questions? Alder Hutchison?
Thank you. I really appreciate this presentation. Ever since I heard about this notion last year, I was extremely excited. I'm a civil engineer, a geotechnical civil engineer. So, I've input on road construction projects in the past. And the one thing we always had to do is figure out trips, but we also had to figure out weight. I'm assuming if someone has really heavy trucks, that will be taken into account in the equation?
Yeah. So, two-part answer. In the state of Oregon, some of the cities have a heavy truck factor. In the village of Pewalki, of North Fond du Lac, twenty years ago, I tried to include that. North Fond du Lac, if you're familiar with it, small village, has a, a large, a huge railroad facility there. Five hundred and fifty workers building locomotives and cars, all those heavy trucks, they pay no taxes. So, in their case, we tried to develop a truck factor. City of Oshkosh was interested because of Oshkosh Truck on the south side of the city. In doing it, our decision was not to do it. And the reason being is how do you administer it? What objective data do you have that allows you as a city to administer that as part of your utility? We couldn't come up with a way that we felt protected you to do it in a way that would be consistent, responsible, and, and verifiable in it. So, we've not dialed in a weight type factor yet on, on the trips.
Okay. And the reason I ask is you could be designing a roadway and then when you find out how many semis are going to be on it, it totally changes the, the design, as you know. It makes it, you need to make it heftier. One thing I like about this proposal is the equations that Alder Johnson is talking about. Once you have the equations, you can play with it. I mean, there's a lot of power behind that thing. And we can actually see what it costs the city to maintain. If we, if we, we could figure out what it would actually cost the city, if we actually did it at a pace that would maintain the streets at a level that's more consistent with keeping the streets viable. I mean, we can easily just throw that in, see what the cost is. Right now, I don't know if we actually, we kind of estimate where we're at, how much. And I know that the number that we do every year, the square footage of streets we do every year is really, we can't maintain, we're not going to have good streets for a long time. I, we're, ultimately, it's going to catch up with us. And we're going to have a lot of streets that we got to maintain all of a sudden right now. And this tool will allow us to see that or at least know what the cost would be. So, I'm totally in favor of getting this tool and using it. And if we're one of the first ones of the big three cities, I'd love that, to actually use it. I would love that for Green Bay because it's getting ahead of the curve again. I think Green Bay has shown that we're not afraid of getting ahead of the curve. And that's exactly what this would do for the city.
Thank you.
Alder Scannell?
Just one question. Feasibility, we're, this is what we're voting on, the feasibility, uh, where to go, I had it right here. The actual worrying, the feasibility. So, what's going forward is we're going to actually have an actionable plan going forward then? What's coming back to us is an actionable plan that we can hash out and work on.
So, ultimately, what we, what we do with you as a first phase is we create a model. The result of that model is, is just three things. How many accounts are there in the city? How many trips on an average weekday in the city? And how confident are you in, in, in the magnitude of those numbers? With those numbers and that confidence, then, we work with your financial people to do those various scenarios of modeling, including this as one of the funding mechanisms, but always with others on it, and work through that to see what seems to be in the best interest of the city going forward on it. So, really, and then the model, again, as somebody mentioned earlier, perhaps there are other factors to, to consider, like the tribal lands or, or things like that. It allows you the flexibility to, again, look at what those relative impacts would be if some of those factors come to play.
So, it's an actionable plan is what's coming. Okay. And so, I have no questions until we have an actionable plan to actually chew on. So, I don't know why we wouldn't go forward with this to find out. So, I'm done, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Just related to Alder Scannell's question briefly, ballpark, how long do you think it would take to create the model that you were referring to and create those, you know, five, six scenarios or whatever the appropriate number would be?
So, we would work concurrently with your financial team. They would develop the scenarios. We would provide the input to help run that engine on it. So, our, our deal would be the focus on your, your thirty thousand properties, right? And assign them trips on it. And the, the timeline involved is a bit of, a little bit of an unknown from the perspective of we need to know. And, and if we go ahead, we'll work with Steve and your staff early in the new year to understand the quality of the data you have available. As, as a real quick example, some cities in their database per property have, have data on the number of living units in that property, which means for us, that's an automatic kind of thing as opposed to is it a quadplex, is it a eight unit, is it a hundred and forty, right? So, finding the, the quality of that data is really key to it. Now, having said that, you know, I think for the size of your city, we'd be talking, you know, eight months, somewhere in that ballpark kind of thing.
Okay. Because I think, just to follow up again real quickly, I think ideally, we'd be able to have all this information in time for next year's budget deliberation, right? So that it could go into effect or not in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I believe that. And then, so, that would take you to that point where you could make an informed decision on the fiscal policy that would not take you to a point of being able to send out the bill. The, the next step then would be, and again, you know, we would work with utility people. And depending on their data and the kind of data, you end up having to associate each parcel, each use with the utility account number in order to implement that. No point in spending the time on that, though, until you've decided whether you actually want to implement or not.
Thank you. Alder Campbell?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation again. You know, what I got out of this committee, too, very interesting. I mean, a road tax is just a, I mean, I mean, a wheel tax is just a count. It's like, it's like counting people in this town. I mean, it, it, it's not accurate. It doesn't tell you the miles, it doesn't tell you the usage, it really doesn't, you know what I mean? What I like about it is, you know, the data that it's going to provide us. And I think the model that we may learn how to run our other utilities and services a little more efficiently because it's always going to give us something to go back on. I mean, if we're already relying on our sanitary stuff because, you know, you know how many toilets are in a house, per bedroom, per people, this is, this is just another category of, of understanding the transportation part of our town, just like the sewage. Maybe could even lead into tighter things for, say, the school district and boards to work with down the road, do, not related to us, but. I mean, I, I think it's, it's, it's a great tool. I think it's, it's going to, we're going to learn a lot from the data, and it's surely, in the long run, going to be able to us to look forward and plan, hopefully, more streets to get done per year. So, thank you.
Alder Storey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you again, Jeff, for, for this. You talked for, we had, the meeting was about two hours, I would think, maybe two, two and a half. And we, the committee voted unanimously on this. You know, I think there was a little trepidation at first. We weren't quite sure, like, well, how are you going to factor that number? How are you going to figure that out? But it sounds like there's already some of these numbers in place, and it's just a matter of plugging things in. This is only for a study, you know, so it's not a mandate. It's, it's a study, and, and that's it. So I, I agree with what Alder Johnson said, or what Alder Hutchinson said, and also what Alder Campbell said, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Right. Alder Burnett?
Thank you, sir.
I, I think from a more practical perspective, I'm just wondering, your firm is RA? Your firm that you work for is that?
RA Smith.
RA Smith. Is that the only, or are there other competitors in this field for Wisconsin municipalities?
Well, there's another firm that's, I believe, has done two, two models or, or so. And I believe another firm started one, and the community went on hold. And, and I believe in Wisconsin, so far, that's, that's it.
Okay. And you, do you specialize just in the state of Wisconsin, or do you have work in other states?
Yeah, RA, RA Smith is, is, you know, we're, we're the designers behind Title Town, the site Stormwater Civil Design on it. We do a lot of municipal work around the state, a lot of DOT work on it. As far as this goes, obviously, this is really unique, and we're active in Wisconsin with it. I'm not aware of any other Midwestern states that are looking at this technique. Some states, like the state of Minnesota, for example, as I understand it, again, not an attorney, as I understand it, they don't enjoy the free-ranging home rule authority that your constitution gives, our constitution gives you. So there's different situations and circumstances. Oregon, Colorado, I believe Texas, some of those states have done them and maintain them.
Yeah, and this would be your largest municipality that you've created a, a study for? Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, or?
Close the floor.
All right. Let's close the floor. Made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Campbell. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Thanks again, sir, for the presentation. Again, very informative. Any comments? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At committee, Director Griner, you had talked about potentially taking back or setting out of stormwater utility bills instead of putting it on the, on the water utility. Could you just briefly explain that and how it might benefit looking into this as well?
Well, one of the issues that we have heard repeatedly from Green Bay Water Utility is that there are charges which include both a sanitary utility and a stormwater utility, and as those charges continue to increase, it's reflected on the water bill, and they are receiving a lot of complaints for things that are not Green Bay Water Utility-related. So we have been, I've been having some, some conversations with Director Ellenbeck over the last year or so about potentially having us come off of their bill. This would dovetail into that fairly well. This would not be, if, should the council elect to move forward with the study, should the study prove to have relevance and be a tool that the council would want to enact, this would be something I feel very strongly should not be on somebody's water bill. So this would work very well with independent billing, consistent with what we had, what we're already exploring.
And then, thanks, Director. What's the amount we pay right now to have them put that on the bill? So it's not, we'd observe?
The amount that we're currently paying water utility? Approximately $1.7 million.
So we would be able to take that back and put it into our own, and it shouldn't have additional cost, if anything?
Correct, correct. We, we are very confident that between the billing software we would have to purchase from Tyler Technologies, our financial software firm, and the additional staff that we would have to employ to do the billing, it would fall well within that, that funding level.
Thanks. And the last que- my second question would be, and last, maybe. Our next step early is setting goals, you know, to have this plan done. The important thing is to set the goals, and I think you mentioned at committee, you'd work with the mayor and council to set those goals. I mean, I personally, I think I mentioned, I'm curious, I'm kind of equally skeptical and intrigued, a little bit of both. My goal is, I obviously want to eliminate the wheel tax, eliminate special assessments, get rid of all of that. More road work. We, we need to be higher than 2%, 2 and 1/2, 3%. We need to be, or we're going to fall irrevocably behind. Perhaps we could offset our tax rate, lower that, or have a credit, reduce our bonding. Those are goals. I'm sure there's others. But do you have kind of a timeframe or how you want to go about collecting those goals, or how that would, would come back to committee, or what do you envision?
Well, the first step in that would be to have an affirmative vote tonight, obviously. So, not so shameless plug. Beyond that, yes, early in the, in the year, in January, I would be reaching out most likely to all 12 Alders in a, in more of an email-type format, seeking input and collecting that data, and then the work that RA Smith would be doing to develop the model could be happening concurrently. We don't necessarily need that number, because as Jeff indicated, we're going to have a number of different scenarios, and essentially, those scenarios are going to change that funding level. So throughout early 2024, we would work through the mayor's office and through the council to identify a number of scenarios that the council would like to evaluate, and then my staff would be tasked with coming up with those cost estimates to accomplish those objectives at the same time that Jeff's team is working on the development of the model itself, and hopefully, those come together sometime during the course of 2024.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. I need to see more before I can make a decision, but it's very intriguing. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments from council? Alder Burnett?
Director Griner, I'll be honest, I wasn't able to watch the entire meeting. So I do have a question on the $100,000. So it's an even number, you know, typically, these sorts of reports or requests get bid out or something. Could you kind of walk through why this firm was chosen, and that dollar amount? Will, will everything be covered by the $100,000, or is that just an estimate?
Well, number one, that is an estimate, and that estimate was the result of Jeff and I having some conversations, his experience in other municipalities, and then applying some scalability. Why was RA Smith? I have been investigating transportation utility for a little over two years now, both within the Wisconsin market and taking a look at some presentations that have occurred at a national level. And what we're dealing with here, this is not a bid scenario. What we're looking at is professional services, so it's, it's quality-based selection. And in my opinion, Jeff and his team at RA Smith are far and above the industry leaders, most well-spoken, well-versed folks in this particular topic here in our local area.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, it was an impressive presentation, a very well-rounded, and that was just my only thought is, you know, are we, are we being consistent with our standards? And it seems like we are.
We are, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Storey?
Just one other quick question. Director Griner, was that, as far as the funding for that, was that ARPA-related?
It, well, it's the interest from the ARPA funding, so it does, the, the ARPA interest does not have the same spending restrictions that the ARPA funds themselves do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any others? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Onto the report of the Protection and Policy Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately. Hearing none. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Eck. Any abstentions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Plan Commission. Motion to approve by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled?
Eight, and then noting an abstention on item two.
All right. Eight will be handled separately. Abstention has been noted. Any others? Hearing none others. All in favor approving the remainder of that report? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved, the exception of item eight. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Hutchinson. That item was pulled by Alder Johnson.
Staff could give us some background on this. We, council, and I don't know how many of you had a chance to see it, but we received an email from the property owner, and it seems like the property owner's intentions are in conflict with what staff is recommending. And if you could also comment, he's indicated that he submitted a site plan for review over two months ago, and still hasn't heard back from staff. If you could also please comment on that.
All right, Mr. Buchanan?
All right, so this rezoning action is being proposed to implement the city's comprehensive plan and the 2017 Velp Avenue area-wide plan. Both of those council-approved plans envisioned Velp really transitioning from more of an industrial corridor to becoming more commercial, and therefore, we recommended that this particular property in its entirety be rezoned from industrial to C2 highway commercial to help support commercial development. Recognizing the property owner's plans to reuse the northern portion of that site for industrial uses, staff recommended the split zoning here to better accommodate the property owner's plans. However, we're recommending that the front 200 feet off Velp be zoned C2 highway commercial to still fulfill that approved vision to create more commercial uses directly along the corridor. As you've been made aware, the property owner is requesting that be reduced from 200 feet to 160 feet to maximize their industrial area on that site. You know, staff initially recommended that 200 feet to really maximize the commercial development on there. Reducing it to 160 limits that development for commercial use. It might make the site less attractive to some commercial developers. That's really why Plan Commission recommended the approval at the 200. That being said, we are not, staff is not strongly opposed to the reduction of 160, as it still provides the ability for a bit smaller commercial development along Velp. In regarding the question regarding the site plan and, and the property owner not hearing back for two months, there, there must be a miscommunication here. Staff did receive a site plan several months ago, made comments back to the property owner. The property owner has said that they resubmitted back in October. Having spoken to staff, they did not receive that resubmital in October. They've not contacted us otherwise to follow up on that resubital, so we're going to have to get back in touch with that property owner to get an understanding of, of what they're requesting with that resubital.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that clarity. I mean, obviously, I, you know, just one of the things that, you know, I'm really sensitive to is making sure that we are fast and responsive to developers, and especially with site plan reviews, because I think that's one of the, the most common concerns that's oftentimes raised with folks, is that site plan reviews don't happen fast enough, so I appreciate that explanation. It doesn't sound like that's really the issue. There's, there's something else there. Regarding the zoning component, though, you know, I mean, they, they submitted the, the plan, and I assume within that plan, their desire is to use, I mean, again, without seeing, right, what that plan is, we don't have that advantage. I, I mean, is it a site plan that calls for using that site for industrial use up to the 160-foot line?
That first site plan that was submitted, I, it's my understanding, didn't have a scale to it, so we couldn't really see at the time where that line was. When we recommended the 200 feet, we weren't basing that decision off of that site plan. It was, to my understanding, just to really maximize the commercial uses along Velp.
Is there any time sensitivity to, to this particular item to rezone it? Really, because that's, I mean, that's something staff's advancing. I mean, from what I heard at Plan Commission, from what I understand from the communication here, from this individual, is we, just go ahead and rezone it, and then you can come back and ask us to rezone it again later. Like, to me, that just doesn't seem very efficient, so what I'm wondering is if we can just refer this back to Plan Commission, have you work out those details? You can get information on the scaling and everything else that you need, rather than having this body do this committee work. I, I don't get the sense that there's time sensitivity on the part of staff to have to have this rezoned, so could you, would that be a fair statement?
And, and just in, in connection to that, just to have staff clarify, maybe, were you saying that the property owner is totally fine with 160 feet of commercial?
Yes.
Because if, if that's the case, I just don't, you know, we might be able to just move forward with that, but...
Yes.
Director Rehnerwig?
Yes. That's exactly what I was going to say. The owner was okay with the 160, and if we could forward it with that.
And staff's comfortable with the 160?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then I'd make a motion to amend this to 160 feet.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to amend from 200 feet to 160 feet, that was seconded by Alder Galvin. Any further discussion? Alder Eck?
Well, I just wanted to know, in that communication, the gentleman did say he wanted to speak, so I just wanted to know, is he on Zoom, or is he, if he's here?
Do we know if anyone's attending remotely, or?
This is Tom Arnot. I am on Zoom.
Oh, there we go.
All right, motion has been made to open the floor by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor, say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it. Sir, the floor is open, so feel free to address the council. Please just first state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Thomas Arnot. I have some properties in Green Bay. My law office is in DePere. And I'm a resident of Florida. 2500 Main Street, Fort Myers Beach, Florida. Yeah, our preference, we have, we bought this site. It was a contaminated site. We have struggled tirelessly to work with the planning department. And, and I must say, it's frustration with communication, with responses, and we demoed the site. We eliminated the eyesore. We knew it was contaminated, and we are continuing, continuing to try and determine the level of contamination on the site. And it's impossible for us to know what we want to do in the future until we know the extent of the contamination and remediation. We're willing to, to reduce it to the 160 feet of rezoning and live with that for now. While we continue to discover what, if anything, we can do with the site once remediation is, is finalized and a no further action required letter is received. But temporarily, we want to use the back portion of the site for storage, whether it be industrial storage or a, a site for containers for people to store things, construction staging site, until we know what we can do with the site. Our premise is to not rezonate at all, but we would support or go along with staff's recommendation to change it to 160 feet, so that we could finally get a decision from the Planning Commission on approving our site plan.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions from council? Alder Scanell?
Thank you, Mr. Hart. So you are looking for other possible usages for that site? Would you consider also commercial then on that site, if possible?
There's a lot of other things that I would consider, but some of them wouldn't be compatible with the contamination.
Okay, but you're not sure of the level of contamination quite yet?
Correct. The next phase is to, to put in a test, venting and testing to test to see the levels of gas that are, are trapped underneath the, the surface.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for our guest? All right. We will entertain that motion to close the floor. Before we do, sir, though, I just want to encourage you to reach out to my office directly, if, if that would be helpful in trying to navigate community economic development. Obviously, we, we take customer service very seriously here, so if you need any assistance from me or Director Rehnerwig, feel free to reach out directly. So with that?
I, I do, I do need that assistance, and thank you. We will all reach out.
Okay, very good. Thanks, sir. Alder Storey makes a motion to close the floor. Alder Stoyer makes a motion to close the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, floor is closed. I think we had an amendment that was offered and seconded to shift from 200 to 160. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Alder Scannell?
I was somewhat prepared to oppose this. I have worked at, that's my district, or used to be my district. I got to tell you, most of my constituents are kind of tired of storage units. You know, they want to see retail. And if we can, all we can do to enhance that would be much preferable. But seeing how he's, that area may not be used for storage, that that may actually be developed for other things, depending upon the waste there, which would also, I would think, even if we denied this and went with the 200, if there's, if that's, if that area has issues with the brownfield, then I would think that would help, that would curtail retail development there. So I'm now in favor of supporting this to see what we can do with what the 160, and if there's more that we can do with Mr. Art, with that area besides storage units. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Alder. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. Entertain a motion. Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. Comments there? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that item has been approved as amended. Report of the Finance Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Park Committee.
Approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been adopted. Personnel Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Public Arts. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any comments here? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Equal Rights Commission.
Approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. We've got the informational items, building report and municipal court report from November 2023. Now onto Committee of the Whole for consideration and possible action to approve the 2023 fiber trade agreement between the City of Green Bay and Brown County. On that one, we'll go to Mr. Wilkett.
Yeah, this is an agreement with Brown County to reclaim some fiber and conduits that they had used and didn't report out. So this equalizes the agreement and gives us some fiber that we can use to connect Fire Station 9 and some other projects.
Okay, great. And just on the timeliness, why we are here with Committee of the Whole?
So, correct. The Brown County BICAN fiber network is no longer going to be around at the end of this year. Bug Tussle will be managing it. Our existing contracts will be maintained as is. And we wanted to get this done before that to get it included with the Bug Tussle contract.
Okay, very good. Any questions for our director? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any debate? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, that item has been approved. Onto resolutions.
To suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll called vote. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any debate here? Alder Johnson?
Just noting an abstention on six. It directly correlates to the other agenda item that I had abstained on.
Very good. That will be noted. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll use the board.
Just give me a moment. I felt.
All right, and those resolutions are approved unanimously. Onto ordinances, first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll called vote, seconded by Alder Weary. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, those ordinances are advanced to a second and final reading. Petitions and communications. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? We're adjourned. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year.